Hi, just checked audio, can anyone hear me?
Yes, this one is the hearing that we're doing right now is for a reduced frontage loss special permit. Sean.
Awesome.
Yeah, come on, Bill, how you doing?
Andy, okay, done?
Yeah, yeah, you were connecting to audio for a while, so I couldn't, but I again now, so.
Alright, okay.
Great. Alright. No, I hear none, see no comment from the public.
Do we want to just, Bill just came here?
Yeah. We're just going over the reduced frontage special permit for the Stevens Park Road and City Depot. We have the Graves report. So, thank you.
And I have that's the vision and we have special permit of that.
Okay.
So if he's in red, he's of the the voting board members, I was, I highlighted him right, because they got to fix it for whatever it ends up being here at the meeting.
Alright. We must know more one of the no findings on this. We have a question, Bill, looks good, alright. Alright, we have a motion to close the public here.
Okay, so did we, I think we already closed the public hearing portion of it.
Wait on that, I apologize, they keep correcting me on that. Alright, do we have a motion to approve the reduced furnished loss special permit for Stevens Park Road and City Depot?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the special permit decision, reduce frontage lot, of course, says about seventeen block A lot three of Stevens Park Road. Second that.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, Janice, alright, thank you very much.
I just want to check real fast. Go, same, Mr. Go, can you hear us now?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I can hear you loud and clear, thank you. Mr. Mr. Yeah.
Alright, alright, so next up, we have a public hearing for ZP Battery Development Company LLC special permit application to construct an energy storage system at three twenty-five Worcester Road, Route twenty, Portaway, thirty, map thirty-seven A. Lot four, second filing, we have a Graves report. Okay. Wait, alright, so I got, alright, here we go. According to section two hundred section two hundred, yeah, three point two point six W and two hundred dash seven point two point G of the Choppin Zone and by law, the Choppin Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, June seventh, twenty twenty-three, seven o'clock, in the planning board office in person at the George McCann Municipal Building thirty-seven Main Street, Chalkham Mass, own five oh seven, in on Zoom, Zoom meeting ID one one two nine three two three five seven, under request of ZP Development Company LLC, one Arkantella Street, Suite six three zero, worth the mass, oh one six oh eight, for a special permit to construct an energy storage system. The system is proposed to be placed on a newly created lot at three twenty-five Worcester Road, Route twenty, the property currently owned by William and Carolyn Porter, Piro Box, two forty-nine Choppin Mass, own five oh seven, the property is located on the proposed Porter Way. The property is currently assessed as map thirty-seven block A lot four point one, the lot is located in the Business Enterprise Zone District and Agricultural R sixty A, R sixty Zone District. Copy of the site plan application available for inspection at the planning board office and town courts office during regular business hours. The application is also posted on the town website on the planning board, any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated or by Zoom meeting, ID number two one one two nine three two two five seven, when representing the applicant is Brendan Gold, Brendan, how you doing?
Good evening, I'm well, Mr. Mr. Chairman, how are you? Are you, are you, are you able to hear me?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
Alright. The board in their pack has the Graves report as well as the the plan of the proposed energy storage system. Now Brendan, would you, you want to just give a quick overview?
I'm, I'm happy to, yep. Yeah, and I can see, I can see Mr. Benson, so I'm not sure if you all can see me, but it's nice to see you all again, for the record, Brendan Gove, I'm the principal of ZP Battery Dev Co, the applicant of a proposed five megawatt AC battery storage system proposed at three twenty-five Worcester Road, also known as Porter Way, which the, the chairman just did a nice job describing what we're looking to do here, I know it's not the first time you've seen the proposed project, so I will be brief. We've been in front of the Conservation Commission with the proposed project and received a negative determination on an RDA confirming that the proposed, that project does not have an impact on any resource area. Believe we got a comment letter back from the peer review engineer, Graves Engineering Mike Andrade, confirming that they have no further comments on the proposed use, in general, the five megawatt AC standalone energy storage system, again, technology, I know you've seen time and time again, we're proposing to have an access to the project off of the existing or the newly proposed Porter's Way, which is a subdivision of planning that you, the planning board had approved previously. We're proposing to extend the existing driveway around the perimeter of the project, satisfying the comments from the fire department. The footprint approximately ten thousand square feet is proposed on previously cleared and gravel area. We are proposing to convert a portion of the gravel area to grass. That's really the extent of our site work, we're not proposing any tree clearing or grubbing or anything like that, so from, from a civil perspective, very straightforward. Happy to talk through any questions you might have and do my best respectfully requesting the board close and approve the special permit and stormwater application for the project.
Alright. Is there any comments or questions from the board after the presentation?
So we have some feedback from Graves. Um, yeah, actually, the, the one feedback we had, it's like from his previous reviews, he'd say, read out your detail on the gravel area, which zero point is pride to him. And because of the timing of it, um, he sent back an email today. They, he has no comments on it, he's satisfied with the detail on the gravel area. He's rounding the battery storage, so.
Book comment twenty-six.
Yeah, from Graves, it says the fence has been revised, it's totally different layout, but if a proposed fence battery storage, or however the revise, does not meet the setback requirements, plus a twenty-five point setback and fifty-five side setback are currently proposed. Those regulations says that we saw hundred feet from property lines.
Or that's, that's an art, our, um. Yeah. That's in the solar bylaws? Or storage? And so first, for setback, setback from property lines for storage, that is what we tell.
He's doing it based on large scale solar facility, is there is an idea setback for the battery storage per se? Such a problem, and that's why I believe Mikey using the bylaws based on large scale, so, Jackson does those setbacks.
What is the structure setback requirement for that zone?
Fifty P.
So they're, they're only in twenty-five, they still don't meet that structure setback requirement? For fun? What is the part?
Yeah, fifty. Front side and rear, and the B P.
The front setback is only twenty-five.
You wait. Is at what point this is owning, Brendan, you familiar where, where, where does the zone line change from BEP to A sixty?
Exactly.
Yeah.
It's behind the facility where changes, okay, the dotted line, okay.
That's B E P to AgriCo.
Yeah, I see.
The proportions.
Yeah, for my right hand. What's the setback for B E P, fifty? All three sides, front side, rear.
They have the battery structure at fifty P.
Oh, it's just the fence.
Fence near it approaches, so.
Oh.
The structure, I mean, is same thing with the solar facility, the fence area might be even at property line, it was with the solar panels. Typically, when we, we did a source, so the application, it's panels that have had to be, you know, the hundred foot setback or.
So I, so for solar, even the battery has to be a hundred feet from the, from the, it's have to be, we had just a case of a fire, it's far enough away from anybody else in the property.
Right.
I remember why we had that. Why would this be any different for just the battery, if we had a flare up? Or it's probably is burned. The setback from the adjacent property should be enough to security.
Yeah, I mean, it's actually would be, if you did, it will require them to follow the bylaws at, for a battery at, at a solar facility and to be the same as the panels, and stand alone, I just follow the same requirements, so, and they do have the room to push this back some.
See, John. And so you sneak in. You have any comments, Bill? Oh, go ahead, Brendan.
If I may, so the, the plan, and I, I wonder if I could show it on my screen here, so I don't know if I'm able to share my screen, here we go. Are you able to see the, the plan here? Mr. Benson, are you able to see the screen? Okay.
Yeah.
So the, the, the setback, the zoning setback shown in this dotted line, our, our fence is within the setback, which we understand to be allowed. All of the equipment associated with the battery storage system, the battery, the transformer, all the equipment is outside of the building setback. So it is only the fence, which is not a structure, that is within the, the setback area, which again is this, is this dotted line here. This, this was, um, this, this was something that, that was discussed, I know with the withdrawal of the applications based on the proposed subdivision dimensions changing, we did shift the location of the equipment farther north, so that we were outside of the building setback, the equipment itself was outside of the building setback by several feet, which is the reason why we withdrew and resubmit, because the, the actual subdivision parcel lines shifted farther north. So we believe, we believe this to be a conforming use.
Okay, go ahead, John.
Just for clarification, wasn't it located on a different portion of the property at one time? Am I, or am I missing, yeah, wasn't that up behind that existing log barn at first?
Yeah, I think there was an issue with that, that's why, this is a totally, this is a totally new public hearing.
And with a new location.
New location, and they had to push it back, um, it's, I mean, it's in the same general area, and it probably is just pushed back to the, by the, the zoning bylaw.
And, and what is, what is the storage for these batteries?
Brendan, what's the storage for the batteries?
So this, uh, the aggregate capacity is five megawatts AC, is that, is that, I'm not sure if that answers your question, I'm not sure what you mean, the storage, the capacity?
That's what he was looking for, thank you.
Okay.
That's the council, what I was on. Over, it will be twenty nineteen or not. Any other questions from the board?
No. Um, yeah, I'm just kind of want to look at the solar bylaws a little bit, and, and the, the new bylaws in twenty nineteen.
Okay. Go right ahead, John.
And I, I don't know if this is pertinent, are you leasing just this area? Is, what, what is your lease area? From the owner, this area, that, that dotted line around the perimeter, I see, or?
Yes, yeah. So the proposed lease area is the ten thousand feet or so within the chain link fence, and then we have some easement areas for access and utility areas, utility, um, easement areas for interconnection of, of the, of the system itself. Mr. Benson, I'm not sure if anyone's talking, but I don't, I don't hear anything, so I just want, didn't want you to think I was ignoring you.
Brendan, you doing underground or overhead service to feed the interconnection?
We don't know yet, we, we don't know yet, we want to do underground, we propose to do underground, we are going through that process with National Grid now. They have been doing underground, I don't see why they wouldn't do underground again here, so I'm expecting underground, but we do not have that finalized yet.
Okay.
Randy, is the owl working?
John, you see it on the print where it says you need?
Yeah, I just, I just, because previously, there was a whole farm down at the bottom of the road, and it's not there now.
Alright, gotcha. Gotcha, alright.
Thanks, yeah.
Any other questions from the board, so do you have anything?
The, I mean, with a large solar, which includes the storage, which is what fifteen foot drive around the entire perimeter, this doesn't allow that, I guess, because of the backside, or the is slow and outside of the fence.
Yeah.
It's part of that requirements for the, you know, large scale solar. It just can't be accommodated in this, in this layout.
Actually, do they show? Or they just still, they show a T driveway, don't they, Bill?
That's right.
And they're like going on.
Yeah. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, this, this, that, the full three hundred sixty degree perimeter access is something that, that we worked through with Captain Carlson, and, and he did provide written confirmation, he was, he was comfortable with what we're proposing here with the T turnaround.
Alright, do we have any sense, did Captain Carlson provide that, rank you, ready at all?
Um, it was actually done part of the subdivision, okay, so they, yeah, they, the only issue they had was with the subdivision, they had pages.
Correct, alright. So I think Captain Carlson paid for that, really, physically, right? Alright.
They had certain that hammerhead for the, turn around there for a prior trip, you know.
I got you. Alright, is it, I know you're still looking for something, I'm sorry if I open up to the public, is there anyone, alright. This time I'd like to open any comments or questions on this application to the public, if you so wish to speak, please raise your hand and state your name and address for the record. Alright. Hearing none, see none. Alright, seems like we, boy, we still have some questions about this application. As far as I, and.
Most of the setbacks.
Yep.
Alright, so if, if it was in our zoning bylaw, which would that require a DBA override, or reapproval as is, or is it, would it be a waiver request, a request, or I don't, could be a waiver, could, because it's what I think it would be a ZBA.
Yeah.
Yeah, did not mean if you.
ZBA?
I guess we need to look at that and see.
Just do some more research?
Yeah.
Alright, you have anything, Bill, or you in agreement as far as that goes?
I agree.
Alright.
So it's a non, non acceptance, and it goes to ZBA, if they, if they want to appear.
Alright, or some more clarification from the zoning enforcement officer as far as that goes?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Alright, Brendan, are you fine with that?
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, we, we, that, that's fine, I know, we, we've talked to Mr. Meskis about this, I'm happy to get his confirmation on that, just so everyone feels comfortable, and we're, we're happy to, happy to move forward in that fashion.
Alright, do we have a motion to continue the public hearing to June twenty-eight?
Make a motion to continue the hearing to June twenty-eighth?
Second that.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye, aye. Alright.
Aye, thanks Brendan.
Thank you all, have a wonderful night.
Well, thank you. Alright, next up, we have a public hearing for New England Power Company, installed temporary electrical substation located at one thirty-four Copper Hill Road. Substation to provide power to the warehouse facility located at fifty-three Sturridge Road.
Mr. Chairman, why don't you give me a second?
Go right ahead.
Do you question the owl is working tonight?
He's not lighting up.
Okay.
That doesn't mean that follows you, I mean, you said it wasn't following.
There we go.
Oh, what?
Yeah.
Oh, there.
Oh, there's, there we go, alright, now go back. And it's, it's the audio coming from that too, because they couldn't hear unless it was coming from your camera, so, under audio.
Alright, yeah, I checked every door.
Check a lot of them, yeah. Here it is.
Yeah. I had C D R.
Alright, perfect. Alright, and according to sections two hundred dash three point two point six W and two hundred dash seven point two point G of the Choppin Zone and planning board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, June seventh, twenty twenty-three, at seven oh five PM, in the planning board office in person at the George McCann Municipal Building thirty-seven Main Street, Chalkham Mass, own five oh seven, in on Zoom, Zoom meeting ID two one two nine three two two five seven, on the request of New England Power Company, one seventy data drive Walter Mass, oh two four five one, Minnesota Temporary Electrical Substation, to provide power to the new automated warehouse facility located at fifty-three Sturridge Road. The system is proposed to be placed on the property located at one thirty-four Copper Hill Road. The property is currently owned by New England Power Company, one seventy-nine data drive Walter Mass, oh two four five one. The property is located at one thirty-four Copper Hill Road, the property is currently assessed as map forty-four block B lot nine, located in the agricultural R sixty A, R sixteen Zone District, copies of site plan application are available for inspection at the planning board office and the town courts office during regular business hours. The application is also posted on the town website on the planning board. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated or by Zoom meeting meeting are given two one one two nine three two five seven. Right. How you doing?
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Can I do a quick old you?
Is the audio also, yes, it is, okay. Um, if I could ask Randy, Sean Barry with VHB, actually, has the slide deck, could he? Share his screen?
Share screen real quick, guys.
And, and while Sean is pulling that up, just for the record, my name is Joshua Lees Smith, I'm outside counsel for National Grid, these are actually co applicants here at New England Power Company and Massachusetts Electric Company, a national project. Uh, Mr. Chair, you gave a good overview of the project, it's pretty straightforward, uh, this, what, what the company is proposing is a temporary mobile substation, and temporary, meaning, uh, the proposed substation will be located, situated at this site uh, between four to five years till a permanent substation can be, and solution can be designed uh, and ultimately energized, and as you mentioned, Mr. Chair, this project is in connection with, uh, the Amazon Romatics Project, which is happening, currently under construction off of Sturridge Road in the town. Uh, Sean, can you advance the next slide?
Yep.
Would you like me to advance again?
Yes, next slide, please. Uh, so this is a very brief presentation, so this is an aerial depiction of the existing conditions of the site. Uh, this is about a sixty-four acre space, size side, I'm sure most of the members in the audience are familiar with, with this location. Um, the significant portion of the site is occupied currently by a one megawatt solar farm. Um, to the northeast, I believe that's the northeast, the upper right-hand corner is, is another existing national. Um, to the northeast, I believe that's the northeast, the upper right hand corner is, is another existing National Grid unmanned electric substation. This is known as Carpenter Hill Substation, um, has been in existence for, for decades. Uh, our project is in the, where the Greenwich Square is located, uh, to the south of the existing solar farm, immediately adjacent to it. It's an existing gravel driveway that, that, um, is, begins at Snake Hill Road and then moves upward and then to the left to access the current solar farm. So what the company is proposing to do is to pave that road and to have it fork off to provide access for this new mobile, uh, what's, what's referred to as a MITS, M I T S, uh, which is a modular integrated transportable substation, a temporary substation. Uh, next slide. And so this is a overlay of aerial that shows the proposed MITS in relation to where the existing solar farm is today. Uh, so as you can see, as I mentioned, that the paved driveway will fork off directly to the proposed MITS. And the MITS is essentially made up of a few components, which we have some photographs in a moment we can show you. But this is equipment. There are no buildings that are contemplated. Um, it is completely unmanned. It's an unmanned substation. There's not going to be workers coming to the site on a daily basis. Uh, workers will come to, personnel will come to the site only to perform testing and maintenance and repairs from time to time. Um, the MITS itself includes the, the MITS, the MITS itself, uh, as well as a, um, a mobile transformer and a mobile circuit switcher, uh, as well as a, a small trailer. The, um, the project also includes the construction of a retaining wall, three sided retaining wall, uh, that will serve to enclose, uh, the MITS on three sides. And in addition to that, there'll be a security fence, which would be a standard, uh, security fence with barbed wire on the top. A total of nine feet. So it'll be eight feet chain link security fence with one foot of barbed wire on the top. Again, standard, industry standard for National Grid's unmanned substation. The rectangular area, I don't know if you can see the label, but the, the project area in terms of the earth disturbance, it's about, uh, ten thousand square feet will ultimately be the area of the yard, the substation yard. And as I'm sure you're generally familiar with most unmanned substations, the, the, the substation will be, um, covered with crushed stone. Uh, as well, that will sit at, on top of that will be the, um, equipment. They, this will not be, um, a lit, uh, facility. Um, there will be thick, like fixtures that will be, um, uh, attached to the, I believe, attached to the MITS. Um, but it will not be, this will not be a source of intense light at all, um, uh, for any neighbors that are in and around this site. Um, other than that, uh, there's, that's pretty much the project scope. Um, again, as you mentioned, Mr. Chair, this, this project is within, um, an agricultural district. Uh, it's a sixty four acre site that is already, uh, contains these sort of unmanned types of utility infrastructure. Uh, and this is a project that is really driven by, um, the Amazon project. I will mention as well that, um, this, this will provide, uh, a total of ten megawatts to support the Amazon project. But in addition to that, this will also improve the overall reliability with respect to electric service for other businesses and residents, uh, within the town as well. So it's not solely, uh, for Amazon, but certainly that is obviously a major project. It's happening in the town. Um, and this is a time sensitive project that the company is looking to deliver so that, um, in and around the end of twenty twenty three, uh, this will be energized, assuming that this gets approved. It's about a six month period, a very, very tight timeframe for construction and ultimately energized by the end of this year. Um, that's what, uh, has been discussed with, between the company, between the company and Amazon. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. We do have, uh, a couple of representatives of the company here, uh, as well as, uh, two or three online. So again, happy to answer any questions.
All right. I know, uh, we have a great report here and also the app can provide it answers. So have we done a great report from, um, response to what they're?
Uh, no, I just verbally speak to Mike Andrews this afternoon because in the, at the time, yeah, he was trying to now move people on and Mike Andrews didn't have a kitchen provided we respond to. However, he said generally they're compliant with everything with the bylaws. It was a question about stormwater, which I spoke to Angela, Angela from Conservation Commission. And they revise their plans to have rain gardens that are centered from the solar facility.
Yep.
And as a result, that takes less than, uh, five thousand square feet and, um, not require the, because it was part of the solar facility and everything, it would have to comply with stormwater regulations. But being the, due to the fact that they separated and have the rain garden and everything separated just for this facility, it doesn't, it's not going to be required to meet the stormwater regulations.
I, I don't mean to
That's going to be voted on to, on to meet Conservation Commission next week, but how that's generally what Angela told me is it's six.
Okay. It's so, thank you, Randy. Um, and through the chair, in turn, Sean Barry from the VHB, he'll, he can speak in a moment. A lot more particular manner than I can with respect to the stormwater. Uh, the original design did contemplate a, a stormwater basin. And as Randy had mentioned, um, uh, the Concom and Conservator Agent had, uh, suggested a rain garden. So the company was meddable to providing that, which my understanding is as a result, there'll be a, actually a net decrease in the total runoff with, with respect to stormwater as well as, um, to improve, uh, pretreatment, um, and quality. Uh, Sean can speak to that. In terms of the separation, um, we, we want to be clear, if it's not separated from the solar farm, um, Sean can speak to that more.
Okay.
There, Sean, do you?
Sean, are you breathing breath? Is that, is that
Yep. Can, can everyone hear me okay?
Yep, yep, yep.
All right. So Sean Barry, VHB here. Um, Josh pretty much covered it, but yeah, so originally in our initial design, we had a infiltration based in here, a small one. Um, there's a few things. Pretreatment, uh, TSS, um, that we didn't comply with. However, that's kind of why we changed to a rain garden. We're in full compliance. Um, this was in direct response to the conservation agent's request uh, upon completing a site visit. So the, the rain garden is more than adequate, uh, especially given that this is only a thirty one thousand five hundred eight, um, square foot disturbance. Um, really, it's not a lot of impervious. How, how the rain garden is set up? Because the groundwater on the site is so high, um, we're, we're using an impermeable liner and, and basically outletting the water that the rain garden collects into the existing swale. The big takeaway here is, like Josh said, this is going to be attenuating peak flows. So this proposed design is going to be sending less water to that existing swale than as it exists today. And it, it meets ninety percent TSS removal. Um, we have, it's kind of hard to see, but at the southern base of the rain garden, we have a small gravel strip. And that's going to be followed by about three feet of sod and, and that helps to get the adequate pretreatment as well. So thi- this is a huge upgrade to how the site exists today. Um, be happy to take any, any questions on it.
Um, I'll go ahead. How, how is the power getting to this? Or some transmission line of the, the lines?
It's going to be connected to the distribution line. Uh, Dick Coster, I'm engineer for National Grid. Um, the power is going to be connected to the distribution line. It's, we can stake it. So it'll get dumped onto the grid through the distribution line.
So, sure. Um, so when you say temporary, how long is temporary? What, what's, what's the thought? We have the zoning for temporary structures.
Between four to five years.
And is the new facility to be built on the site or is it upgraded to the existing snake or the existing?
I believe it's going to be built on this, the design hasn't been, full sighting of where exactly has not been determined yet. And of course, we'll, we'd have to come back to the board for all of the necessary permits, um, for that project.
Okay. So four to five years is what you were thinking? Could be longer though?
Uh, I, I've been told four to five years. The thought is that it would, it would not, it would be, um, cited elsewhere on this, on this site. Um, and ultimately this mobile, I believe that the MITS would be decommissioned, uh, once the permanent is fully energized.
Decommissioned and moved.
Right.
Go right ahead, Gene.
Um, is this on a concrete pad or is it just on gravel? This whole thing?
It's in a concrete foundation, partially. The MITS itself is, and actually, Sean, could you advance a slide? Here are those images that I promised. Uh, so on the left is the MITS. And the other two images are samples of, uh, the circuits, mobile circuit switcher, as well as the mobile transformer. So the MITS itself, um, it's going to be partially below grade, I believe, uh, contained in a, what, what could be described as a vault. Just concrete, not, not just sitting on ground.
With the chair?
Go right ahead, Sean.
What, what is the noise associated with this unit?
If you want to see that.
Um, the noise will not be any higher than the ambient that's out there now.
You do have a neighbor right across the street.
Right, they're here tonight.
Yes.
Was there any consideration of putting that behind, you know, because there's quite a bit of land to the, when we're driving that road, there's a quite a bit of flat land up behind there. That was moving away from our neighbors.
Reason where we, the reason we cited it there was so that we could get the transmission connection. We have to run a transmission line up from the lines that are down below. Um, so we have to run, um,
So you're not going from Snake Hill Road, you're going through the transmission lines at the bottom.
Right. And through the property that we have the solar farm on, bringing the transmission up over there to supply them, supply the MITS and then the power coming out of the MITS will go to the distribution lines on Snake Hill Road. Have we got anything from the fire department, Randy? Those comments?
No, they do. They did receive coffee, yes.
Mr. Jack, I will note that, um, we did receive a copy of comments from the building commissioner.
Yes.
Who had indicated that he had no issues with this project.
All right, thank you. Sure. Go right ahead, Bill. So is there power being generated at this station?
Power being transformed, bringing the power from the transmission line through the MITS substation is being transformed to a lower voltage so that we can bring it out on this, on the distribution line, but there's no power being generated.
No.
Being transformed.
And how much storage do you intend here?
What do you mean?
Battery storage.
There is no battery storage. There's, there's batteries that are associated with the MITS, but they're not, they're just for operation, facilities in the equipment. They're not to store power.
They're not batteries in the sense of the vast, that was just
Correct. Yeah, yeah. They're not like
But there's a whole trailer for a battery trailer. So is that a container, a storage container in the summer's trailer? Um, no, it's not battery trailer. Those are basically transformers and mobile transformer, mobile circuit switcher, battery trailer, you know, the gauge riser.
Right. There's a battery trailer. It's like typically like a small trailer that, like the scouts use, bring their equipment, camping.
Like a landscape trailer.
Yeah.
Not a storage container.
No.
What's that battery storage for?
Um, in the event that we lose, uh, power to, uh, the substation itself, we need to have batteries there to power the equipment so that we can switch, make, to switching off the position. If, if for some reason we lose station service power, we have our own, it's basically our own generator, a battery that will run equipment.
How much of this equipment is under grade, underground?
Well, if you see the MITS to the left, like we like to refer to it as a substation in a box. The portion that's like the, uh, the grave, the wide plan beams that are making up the bottom frame, that will be submerged. So you'll see the little box.
Submerged into a concrete bed.
Yeah, it's a concrete foundation that's open underneath so that we can run cabling and stuff into it. And we set the MITS in there because our guys have to be able to open those doors to access the equipment. So if we don't have it level with the ground, it's a safety clipping hazard for them. So we can sink it down.
And so then there must be some, some pump or something to get water out of that cavity below there.
Um, there won't be a permanent some pump, uh, installed.
Yeah, drainage then under there.
No, usually whatever accumulates in there, it happens.
And so that container is enclosed. There's no drainage on this?
No. There's no point to it.
And where would the permanent power go in the future to the Amazon facility or come from in the future? So what happens four, five years down the road?
Right now, we're looking at building a permanent substation somewhere on that property.
The same sixty four acre property?
Yes. That's what we're looking at right now. As Josh mentioned, we don't have any designs or anything yet, but that's what we're looking at. That's what we're targeting.
Why couldn't, could you make this permanent?
Can't do it fast enough for Amazon. Have to be temporary. We, we did a temporary at West Charlton Substation and now we're doing a temporary at Snake Hill. And then we're going to do the permanent so that we can eliminate these two temporary.
Where's the other one?
That's under twenty. Right after the same. Yeah.
In existence.
It's an existence. Yeah, we put a smaller MITS there. This is a larger MITS and they'll both go away when we can build a permanent station.
And the capacity to that permanent station and take care of future growth along the week twenty quarter or, uh, we've got another permitted warehouse type design?
Melissa, you want to answer that question?
Yeah. Yes, thank you. Good evening. This is Melissa Fields, project manager for National Grid. I'm overseeing the, this temporary MITS installation as well as the permanent Snake Hill Substation, uh, facility. The permanent Snake Hill Substation facility will serve forecasted area load, um, for the area, including, uh, additional load growth and distributed energy resource generation.
Do you have any battery storage on your solar field on this property? Right now, currently, it's just a solar field.
I, I don't believe so. I don't believe there's battery energy storage at the solar facility currently.
Yeah, I don't think there's batteries or
Is, let's go to the chair.
Go right ahead.
Um, is there any vegetation being removed for this, so this, this temporary substation on, on the property or is it existing?
There's, there's, uh, there's limited clearing where the ten thousand square foot yard, substation yard is to be located. Um, and between Snake Hill Road and the proposed MITS, uh, there's some distribution line work that is, uh, necessary in connection. There's some distribution line work along Snake Hill Road, uh, and some distribution line work that will literally will tie into the proposed MITS. So there'll be some tree removals in connection with that.
Okay. Any added vegetation for site improvement along that property? So it's, it's is that been done? Is that, is that on the plans?
It, it's not on the plans, um, but I know that representatives of the company have been speaking with the Underwoods, uh, directly, um, in connection with the visual, uh, potential visual impact. Uh, I will say that the, for those who are familiar with the site now, there's quite a bit of robust vegetation that's there now. Uh, in large part due to the vegetation plan that was required, going Quite a bit of robust vegetation is there now, uh in large part due to the vegetation plan that was required in connection with the solar farm. Um and most of that is existing and it's it does serve as a vegetative buffer. The mitts itself is gonna be, it is it's between seventy, around seventy-five feet from the edge of pavement of Snake Hill Road. So it's a fairly decent distance setback from from the street.
Yeah.
Um and we feel that the vegetation, even with some of the tree removals, is is going to be adequate. That all being said. Um the company is is perfectly willing to take a look with respect to further mitigation. Um that may be, you know, that that's up to the board's discretion.
Don't worry. Go right ahead, John.
So after five years, it's it's done, what would be the size of what is to replace us?
We would just return it to what it is today, which is basically grass field adjacent to the. I don't know, are we that far along, Melissa, do we have a footprint for the permanent stuff?
No, not at this time, some preliminary engineering.
I mean.
Ballpark, right?
Ballpark size.
Well, it's typical.
Yeah.
You must wear a typical size, you know, a ten megawatt comparable size, you get area. That's not working again.
Melissa, what would be like the typical size for a new substation generally ballpark, not gonna hold you to it?
Right, um yeah, Dick, I would refer to you. I know we have two proposed uh substation transformers, one fifteen to thirteen eight.
It would be similar to the one on Route twenty in West Charlton.
Okay.
Inside, yeah, might be a little bit bigger, but it'd be similar to the one that we have on Route twenty.
Not knowing that, what is it compared with the size of what you're putting there now?
Size wise footprint. This is like ten thousand square foot, I think, based on the print, what's at about twenty to thirty.
Yeah.
Just my point is that if you have this here now and then.
Got you, double, okay.
So it would be a significant impact in the future. Somewhere on the site.
So we don't know where exactly it's going on the site, but we're looking further in. We're not looking at where this one is, we're looking a little further deeper into the property. That's what we're looking at, but I don't wanna make any promises because we're just so. Be at the beginning of the design process.
Plus they would have to come back to us.
Yeah.
It's here now, well, we're just making.
No, yeah, we we can safely say that it's not gonna be simply an expansion of of the mitts.
The whole construction project.
It will be, it will be a totally different location on this site away from this mitts.
And then when the other ones up and up, the mitts will go away.
Up and energized, correct, yeah.
This is a retaining wall on three sides, it looked like the longest sides. And that's cutting into the, I guess there must be quite a slope right out of Snake Hill Road.
Yeah, the problem is the solar farm has such a slope that it, in order to make any kind of a leveled spot for this mitts. Um we had to build it up. And so we ran into the problem, will we build it up with a wall or do we build it up with slopes? And if we build it up with slopes, it would have been a much larger footprint. And we just didn't wanna do that, so the easier way to do it is just to build a wall.
So this, it's hard for me to read that, is the height of the wall zero to twenty-five?
Twenty and a half.
Twenty and a half feet or inches?
Yeah, there's only one spot in the back corner where it's twenty feet, because of the older land, it's not twenty feet, it's I think it's. Between five and twenty feet.
I just wasn't sure if that was feet or inches there.
And we have pictures of what the wall looks like too. Yeah, it's just a very smooth.
Yeah, this is the depiction of the materials.
Is this a difficult facility?
Yes.
Well, actually, this brings up your question. Um you have the 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 site for the pad and all that, but you also have. Um what would appears to be a significant clearing outside the fence here. Which is really going to open this up to the road, particularly the neighbors across the street. Is there any way that you can use some form of buffering or plant new trees to provide the. Buffering with the neighbors and people across the street?
If if the if the board feels that that's something that they would.
Because once they do the clearing, even as it's shown outside the fence here, there's still a significant. Uncleared location. That, you know, is relatively close points, seventy something odd feet, and if they clear it outside that air. This can be a pretty significant amount of trees removed that is gonna open it up. For the, where the neighbors will be have a visual impact of looking at it. So that we can provide something to, you know. Lessen the impact on the neighbors by, you know, planting some trees just to buffer it from. The naming properties, the house right across the street, so.
I believe there was two hundred and fifty-five evergreen trees planted in front of that solar farm.
Yes.
In front of this.
Well, that's what I'm worried about, which I mean. Yeah, so there should be a landscape plan associated with this. So and with the whole solar farm, when that was built, there was a tremendous effort to put. And there were good side date, put spruces and all different types of trees all planted within there, and it looks like you're definitely gonna approach on that. Tree line.
The majority of the plantings that were part of that.
I mean. And so we have our engineer review, you know, to see. Know, to make make sure that we just maintain a good buffer, you know. The less than the visual impact on the neighbors, we know it's gonna be there for at least five years, so. If there's if there's enough enough green buffer left with the construction, that's fine. If not, that they would be willing to plant some trees, just uh lessing the visual impact on the neighbors.
I could say, I'm sorry, Mister Chair, that the company is is. Definitely amenable to providing uh trees, if you're talking about evergreens or non-desiduous, that that makes sense with respect to. Providing mitigation, I will say that the the. Landscape plan that was approved in connection with the solar farm, the vast, vast majority of that is gonna remain undisturbed. There are, there are gonna be, as I said, there are gonna be some tree removals that are close to the road. Which the the company could do that as part of, that's really a maintenance repair activity anyway. Um there are gonna be some holes that are have going to have to be removed and replaced in kind. And so that's gonna result in some trees having to be removed. Most of those trees are shade trees, they have nothing to do with the landscape plan, they're removed back in connection with the solar farm. Again, that all being said, the company is perfectly willing to provide some evergreens, provide some enhanced visual mitigation for. Really, we're talking about the Underwoods here, um and uh I would only ask. Uh respectfully of the board that we be able to submit something that the peer reviewer could review. Working with staff as well to review that and have that be a condition of approval tonight.
Right.
The the timeframe on this is, and and I'm sure you hear this all the time from the owner, first time is of the essence. This one, it really is, time is of the essence, this is not a grid reliability project, this is a customer driven project. And one could really argue that it's a economic viability um project that Amazon is what we do. They're willing to really employ people and bring tax revenue to the town, all of this is driven, they've got an extremely. Uh you know, constrained construction timeframe that has very little room for deviation. And again, the delivery timeframe on this, as I said at the outset, is to be energized for this by the end of the year. Which for National Grid, if you're familiar with National Grid, everything, things can take time. That is a very quick turnaround for grid and that will go, any number of things could go wrong within that timeframe, and if it does. Then Amazon and Grid are in a world of hurt in terms of their construction time timelines.
Well, I agree with you, I mean, we can't really determine. What if anything can be need for a buffer until it's actually constructed anyways. You know, until we see what air clearing, they're willing to put a condition that is, you know, reviewed by Mike Andre. It feels that some sort of buffer is required, they can do that, you know, after it's built. Cause they're not gonna plant trees beforehand anyway, so.
And and with comments from the neighbor.
The neighbor, just to make sure they, you know, there's. No negative visual impact for them, but I mean, we can't really do that until it's involved anyway, so.
Any other comments from the board, or open up to the public? All right, this time I'd like to open any comments to the public, if you so choose to speak or have a question, please raise your hand and state your name and address for the record. Go right ahead.
Under Underwood, and my husband Ray. Um we've been the butters for about fifty years. And we just um have had a wonderful relationship with National Grid. And we appreciate the use of their land, we rode ridden horses there and hiked. And when the solar panels went in, they were very good about putting in all of the vegetation. Really to keep that rural atmosphere of Snake Hill, and we hate, would hate to see it go, I mean, Snake Hill is unique. And you have answered most of our questions and we just um would be. Trust that you will be mindful of our concerns, um the property value is gonna be affected. And in our last years, we don't wanna be looking at a box of electricity, you know, we'd like to be looking at some nice um vegetation. But we've had a good relationship with National Grid over all these years, and we trust that you would be mindful of our concerns.
All right. What's existing there now with solar field, what they did, was that totally acceptable?
Yes, yes, they were very good to deal with, all of their subcontractors were. Very um respectful of our use of the land there, so it was, it was a very good relationship.
Good. All right, any other comments or questions from the public? I hear none, see none. Any uh discussion from the board and all they. Every. On the table.
And and I understand that we've got some Graves comments. Seventeen to be exact, that have no. Overture on them. Um. I mean, we could prove it.
Yeah.
The stipulation that all these are. Closed and addressed and approved by Graves, but working with them in the past, this, I'm sure there's one or two details on here that. You that they would, you know, he would confer to the board for clarification or approval on, so I don't. I saw the the VHB letter. Must have played that that had some response, I think, obviously it's VHB's response.
And I will say through the chair, that the VHB, they've been in contact with uh Mike Andre. In connection with his initial letter and subsequent thereafter, through the plans. Uh that were updated in response, direct response to Mike Andre's letter, uh essentially incorporated all of his comments. The vast majority of his comments, especially the um the first few labeling.
Yeah.
Um and I think we have, we discussed the stormwater uh earlier this this evening. The stormwater, again, that's something that the company would be perfectly willing to have, uh you know, be subject to Graves. Final review and approval, uh working with with Randy and staff, uh which I'm assuming. You trust both of them, so.
Now, Randy, going back, didn't you have a verbal conversation with Mike earlier on today, and he mentioned that everything's pretty much all set, we just need writing from him?
He just didn't have, you know, given the timing of everything, he didn't have an opportunity to put it in writing. Uh for for this meeting, but generally he said everything's in. They. Uh answered all the questions is from his last last uh. Peer review and that, as Don suggested, that anything. That they address all the comments and my peer review will get a confirmation that in writing from my. You know, it's a condition of approval from board.
And he feels that it can be resolvable, okay, yeah. The other comment, a lot of this is is obviously, it's all in the agricultural zone, so very tight conditions on that. Um but VHB, it, you know, has already modified the plans, um just to barely put in the. The rain garden, which, you know, is in excess of the reduction in TSS for. For that, for example, so it looks like a great um great thought has gone into the design. And, you know, based on the comments from, from our peer review engineering. Including, you know, stormwater management, wetlands applications.
Right, they already have. Or we do the activation agent, um they'll be voting out on it at your next Wednesday meetings. And based on the revised plan with the new rain garden, that was a trigger point of whether they. Missed stormwater regulations or they had to comply with the stormwater regulations, but. Once you saw the revised plan, that you satisfied that they would not meet the new stormwater regulations.
So that should help with their application.
Our board have any of any, any other comments? Are we able to motion to close the public hearing?
Make motion, close public hearing on Snake Hill mitts project.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Hi, hi, hi.
Hi. All right, do we have a motion to approve? The um. The Snake Hill mitts, application for National Grid. With conditions of raised engineering uh comments dated May twenty-sixth, so are all acknowledged and. That um. Any shading or tree planting? They'll be.
Screening, screening is required, the first reasonable satisfaction of neighbors.
Yep. Go right ahead.
I would, the company, I I think it's been. Evidenced by the statement made tonight, that they do have a good working relationship.
Yes.
They have talked with the neighbors uh directly in connection with this project.
Yep.
And they will absolutely work in good faith to continue to do that. I would, I would, I would never condition any project on discussion with a neigh with a neighbor.
I was satisfied. Well, I kinda said.
Satisfactory to the.
Okay. Legalese.
I think, I think.
Okay.
Well, it's it's not so much um satisfaction, it's it's more uh. It should be through the peer reviewer and staff. And and.
Okay.
And they will work with the the neighbor as well as part of a sort of joint discussion, that would be fine. And as as Randy had mentioned, um. Uh a- and frankly, if. If I would imagine if the Underwood is not included in that, then uh they'll let Randy know, and then Randy will. You know, it'll be up to him and the peer reviewer. Uh the other thing is, I, Mister Benson had mentioned um that this, you you won't necessarily know uh what. Where the planet should be, the robustness of it, um based on what's gonna come out versus what's still gonna remain. Until the project is built, so I I would, as part of that condition, I would suggest it would be something along the lines of um. That that the plan for the landscaping would be uh approved. Through staff and the peer reviewer prior to energization of the substation.
Right, yeah, right, until we see.
And that's that way, it 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 can be done well in advance of that, I think it'd probably be a site, one or more site visits with yourself, neighbors. And maybe Mike Andre with the company, go out, go out, see, do an inventory of what's there now, and then um. Yeah, and then you can come up maybe with a preliminary plan, and if you if you wanna wait until everything is actually cleared and do another assessment, then. You could do that, but I would, I would wait until it's actually. Energized um a- and and Randy would then approve the plan before that.
Did I just get the identity of property?
Thirty thirty Snake Hill Road, thirty thirty. Thirty thirty. Right across from that.
I mean, I. Clearing the site. Free companies, I know can get a little overzealous, you know, so they will be at a ball way to the road. You mark out typically mark out the limited disturbance.
Yeah.
For a free company.
Yeah, we'll mark what we want.
Yeah, okay, good.
Yeah.
This happened on other properties.
Yeah.
And I would just know one more.
Yeah.
Um, if if since you're mentioning the letter.
What item?
Item six.
Yep.
And I don't know the custom in the town, um but this is, we had requested a waiver. This is just. A requirement with respect to showing on the plan. Uh, the ownership and a budding land location of buildings within three hundred feet of the property. As indicated on the most recent town assessor record, we we didn't show that because it's a sixty-four acre site. Uh, so we, to the extent necessary, we request a waiver from that requirement. I don't know if that's. If you, if applicants typically request waivers on that, but. Just point that out.
Plan note waiver.
Yeah.
Said.
Well, and all have all the butters been.
Yes.
Notified?
Yes, e- everyone's been notified within that's within an entire sixty-four acre site. Three hundred feet.
Yes. The only ones who care.
Make a motion to approve the uh the application for the Snake Hill uh mitts power. Well, facility, transmission facility. Uh contingent upon. Uh, the Graves review satisfaction, the Graves review issues. And um the screening. A reasonable amount of screening. According to the planning board staff and Graves engineering.
I'm sorry, that that will. That that which screening will be approved prior to energization of the of the mitts.
Right.
Is that right?
Correct. Do we have a second? One second. All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Hi. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Project.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Alright, next up, we have a uh. Continued public hearing for ZP Battery Development Company LLC Special permit applications instructed three energy storage systems. AKA Larry's Way, St. Drew Griffin Road, map twenty-seven block C two and three, they have requested to continue to July twelfth. We have a motion to continue that public hearing to July twelfth on Larry's Way.
Make a motion to continue Larry's Way. Application to July twelfth.
Art, you have a second? One second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Unanimous. Alright, next up, we have a public hearing for Edward Service Inc. Site plan application at sixteen Servant Route twenty, they have requested to continue to June twenty eighth. We have a motion to continue that application to June twenty eighth.
I make a motion to uh. Edward Service Incorporated.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, hi.
Hi. Alright, next up, we have a continued public hearing for Dolphin's Concrete Incorporated Site Plan Application one forty-six West River Route four. In twenty, the engineer has requested to be continued to the meeting on June twenty eighth. We have a motion to continue that public hearing.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing for the Dolphin's Concrete Site Plan Application at one forty-six. West Road till June twenty eighth.
Second. Alright, all those in there, Tim, alright.
Hi. Hi, hi.
Hi, unanimous. Alright, next up, we have a uh A and R from the eternal on Freeman Road, they opened to create one lot. I think we did the uh. At our last meeting that we had, we did the reduced frontage. Special permit on this particular lot.
Yes.
Freeman Road.
Was uh one of the. We brought the reduced frontage lot. Now they are committing to A and R plan. That will allow them to. Some files that the bridge needs. So we have one conforming lot and one new.
One A within that same plan.
Originally used for the special permit. They would reduce front of law.
Well, one A is.
So we already approved.
Right now, it's just the A and R to legally set up the two lots.
One lot five acres. Sixty thousand square. Proposed.
Yeah, they didn't have enough from the John Freeman Road. One seventy-five E, the other one's a hundred and twenty to one E.
I remember this, wasn't there an issue with the well?
Yeah.
Or, yeah, okay.
Alright, do you have a motion to approve the uh A and R creating one lot?
A and R creating one lot or creating a new lot? Yeah. So two lots.
Yep.
Um, make a motion to approve the A and R for. And Julie Turner? Thirty-five Freeman Road.
You have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi. Hi. Hi.
Bye. Alright, next up, we have um. Sleepy Hollow Estates Reduced Frontage Lot Annual Acquisition Extension Request, it's on Davidson and A Young Road.
This was one that was approved two years ago.
They're looking through extension to July fifteenth, twenty twenty-four.
When you're. And the construction started?
I don't know. Yeah.
Oh my God, has this been?
Think the year old?
Just a year old.
That's not right.
They get two years with the thing.
Yeah.
So. Do a motion to extend. The uh.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to extend this Sleepy Hollow Estates Reduced Frontage Lot Annual Acquisition. To seven fifteen twenty twenty-four.
Second down.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Hi.
Hi. Alright, unanimous. Alright, next up, Emma was supposed to self-division discussion through completion meeting, I'm just with the applicant and Tim, how you doing? Good. Alright, so we received. Letter from you, I think everyone has in the packet, we received it by email. And. I think this, because you're on our our previous agenda from the beginning of. Of May, I think you were away, right? And you told Randy you couldn't attend, couldn't make it. And that's when we were. Um. We discussed, because back at our um. Randy, what was that November meeting, the last time?
Sixteen.
November sixteen, twenty twenty-two, we've given you an extension to. The Maytown meeting to get everything done. Maytown means come and gone in the, in the uh. Roads not been accepted, nothing was really submitted. As far as that goes and. Um, I watched the meeting again, it was probably like the seven fifty mark. Uh, member dog Clay made the. Made the comment of, if you don't have it in by town meeting, that's it, we got no other choice. Okay, alright, just want to make sure that we clear, we have all the facts. Out there.
There's nothing incorrect in that letter, I said.
Alright, so I just want to go down the items here. Um.
And I can't. Submit anything until Mike Andre approves. And you have to ask Mike Andre to review these things.
Alright.
I can't do that. To that, he had all this information April fifth.
Okay.
Okay, and he didn't review it until April twenty.
Listen, we November, this is November. We're going back to November.
I understand.
And we wanted, we wanted to get it done by night and it did not get completed and damage was done over the winter. Yeah. Where a tree fell on top of a chain link fence.
Yep. These are maintenance issues, that's.
Yeah, but it's it's to the point where the town can't accept it, like that stuff sounds fixed.
Okay.
And none of it.
Understand, but.
Yeah, and then. So. I mean, I get, we have an obligation to. The people that pay taxes in town and vote. That developers follow through with what they're required to do.
Okay.
And when you purchased the subdivision back in. Twenty thirteen, you. You kind of took on everything that was approved. As from from the town, from the previous.
Yeah.
From the developer.
Yeah.
So one of them was formed, see out of the subdivision rules and regulations that we have. And item nine says, the applicant further agrees that. If the definitive plan is approved, anytime thereafter and after the streets and ways are completed in the subdivision, which they were. The applicant, when requested to do so by the board, will convey promptly to the town. Inform satisfactory to the board at the applicant's expense, valid and unaccompanied said streets and ways together. With any apprehension and related thereto. So. You you closed on your last house in August tenth, twenty twenty.
Yeah.
That's almost three years ago.
I don't think that's right. I think it's been a little.
I looked it up on the registry.
Okay.
So it's 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 been two years and ten months. That's a little excessive. And I did the math, I and I added up, I went on this uh. The assesses page, I I I did the. What the people paying up there for taxes. And I took all the assessed values, the average value. And what their averages for all twenty-four houses that I found on there. Their total taxes from that subdivision is like a hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Okay.
And they get in zero town service, zero. And this is the model example of why the town, whoa, whoa. This is the model example of why the town requires subdivisions to be phased now. This is one of the last subdivisions. That was not required to be phased.
So are we going by the book or are we going by what you want to do yet? Because every one of those roads that I ask you if they're approved and.
Oh, I I have.
A street light.
I have all the dates.
Okay, none of them have a street.
And please, please remember.
Okay.
Alright, Lamps Pond Circle, October town meeting of twenty fourteen, Bikes Pond Circle.
Yeah, but if they don't have a street light at the end of the summer, they're going to get approved.
Listen, these are pre- previous boards. Previous boards, they've already been approved.
It's a town bylaw. You told me that. We have two thousand dollars of my money.
They didn't take three years to get it approved after the last house was built. I mean, come on.
Well, I mean, are we going by the bylaws or not going by the law?
This board's going by the bylaws. The different boards back from.
Recent ones I looked at.
Well. The most recent one is uh from twenty fourteen. Lamps Pond Circle, when Willow Tree Lane was twenty ten. No. I'm bringing a letter here.
Why don't they have a street?
That that I told you, previous boards. Go he.
Well, it's a previous builder that started this place and he had stuff that wasn't even on the plan that Mike Andre wants now.
Well, listen, I mean, a previous board.
Okay.
Mike was still the the engineer back then, I think. I don't know how long Mike's been the engineer for a long time for this. Well, listen, wouldn't encourage you to hurry up and get it done so you're done in a whole with it.
Uh, yeah.
So he can't find anymore. Listen, I've been on your side.
Trust me. And then all of a sudden, this last one, look at all these other bond review. He did. Some of the stuff was never on it for the last ten years or however.
Listen.
And now all of a sudden it shows up.
Yeah.
How can I know that?
Tim, the sidewalk. The sidewalk's down there for two years almost.
It's not even the section that he wanted raised. Okay, and if I didn't have that meeting with him, I would have put in more money into this place. And Mike Andre said, would have came in and said, no, that's not the section I wanted raised, I wanted this section.
I don't, you know, what?
So how do you, how do I quit that? Just keep spending money and I can't get a bond reduction?
Get it right. I mean, we've been asking.
My two engineers and Mike Andre.
Yeah.
We went through every point and there's about two points left, other than the maintenance issues that developed over this past winter.
Yeah, then what about the cut in the road? What was up with the cable company?
I didn't give him a permit. You should gave him a permit.
How?
No, the town did not. You want to see your email? The town gave a permit. I don't know. No, the town did not. We can't give a permit for a road.
Yeah.
Only the highway department can. Here's your email from December twenty eighth or whatever day it is. They they will have to contact.
Yeah.
For approval.
It doesn't say, yes, you can do it and.
I didn't get any, no one ever notified me. We didn't give them approval, they. That he built to contact you.
Yeah.
Nobody ever contacted me. But that's not our fault. We didn't give him approval, we totally contacted. Okay, then I will go after them tomorrow because they destroyed my property.
Yeah.
Okay.
I agree.
No, I mean. But this email, okay, it says Mike Andre will review this and give an update. He knew nothing about it. So these people just go in and do whatever they want to do.
Yeah. More they they operate it, I guess, but I mean, the thing is, it's just been long enough. I mean, I'm sick of getting the emails from the the people that live up there. We just got another one today.
About.
Called called stuff, they they want the road accepted, they want.
Trust me, I didn't want to be done with you.
It's been almost three years.
Yes.
Too long. Way too long, been asking for over a year and a half, but please get this done.
So where do we go from?
We gotta, we gotta take it back. We gotta take the, we gotta revoke the bond and take it, then we're gonna, we're gonna put it out the bit and it's gonna go, it's gonna be prevailing ways to finish the work. And whatever's left, you get back.
So I just walk away right now. And like I said, I want to know who's there. I want to see their insurance because it's my liability.
How is that? Okay.
The attorney says they extended the information to him and then he'll map out the proper procedure as how to do.
Alright.
Okay.
No problem.
Because apparently anybody can go in there and do whatever they want.
Spectrum proved it, I guess.
Huh?
Spectrum proved that.
Got her. Okay, but that's just, I get an email and nobody contacts me, next thing you know, almost took my plow off when I was plowing the place. Okay, and it's just not right. You know, the little things that are done and Mike Andre's. Bond reduction, he just makes up numbers. I put in all the trees, he says I I'm short fifteen. No, these are the people that didn't want them.
Yeah.
There's four dead trees, okay, times six fifty is twenty-four hundred dollars. Okay, the paving is eleven hundred dollars, it's in his thing. If it's any more than that, why did he put that in his thing? How do we go from there? Okay.
But I mean, we have to do something about that patch in the road. I think that's going to be more than eleven hundred bucks. I think that's gonna be more than eleven hundred bucks, if we can fix it right, that, the curving.
Yes.
We do the curve as far as that.
Yes, and the landscaping, they, you know, whatever they did it, they didn't plant any seed or anything else.
Yeah.
Thanks in with basins and everything too.
Yeah, there's other, there's other stuff, and I mean, just, I mean, some of the trees are in poor health too, those should be addressed.
Well, it's been three years, these trees are living, I thought I only had a guarantee of one year.
Yeah, once you turn it over to the, to the town, you haven't done that yet.
No. Okay, you're the experts on, I, I've never done this before, I've told you that.
And the thing is, is. The thing is, we've never had this much problem.
Well, go look at somebody's subdivision.
Listen, no, listen, as far as the paperwork and the process of how fluid it goes, and not being delayed. Not having a, a go back, not caring from the neighbors. And that's. That's the tough part, and I, I look, you look at what the people are paying. For taxes and what it comes out to, and they're getting no service, that's where I have a problem. Getting no town service.
What kind of service?
Plowing, sanding.
I take care of all that.
I get, better I got today.
Are you billing them for?
Here we go.
Timely.
Huh?
Yes, timely.
Better than some of the roads in town.
He has sent us invoices for plowing, sanding, when it shows up, the day after the snowstorm, after a neighbor has already plowed the entire neighborhood, so people can go to work, he's never actually done what he has billed us for.
Ask him if they could just show you a handsome check, because none of them paid it, okay? And these are the first I've heard, why wouldn't they call me and complain instead of calling you? Because I, it's, it's, it's plowed, because I know it's a hill, I make sure they can get in and out at.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah. All right, does anyone have any other comments in the board?
Nope, I think we've made the decision and.
Yeah, and here's the math I did. And.
Decision was made this morning.
As far as the engineering, that's all complete, what do I do with that?
Because part of that bond money is going to be to pay for. Engineering done for the ASB.
It's all done. That's the meeting I had with Mike Andre, we went through it point by point, the rest of the stuff that is left is just a maintenance issue.
We're gonna just leave it at that.
Leave it at what? It's a lot of money you're holding on there.
And we got to make sure that everything gets done, gets done properly, that's, that's part of it, and whatever's left, you'll get back.
Okay.
But please remember, prevailing wage is that it's gonna get paid. Dan, go ahead.
Excuse me, I don't have a dog in this fight, I just.
Yeah.
I was here for something else to get canceled earlier, and, but anyway, the end of the day is um. You know, I, I built one center estate thirty something years ago, right?
Yep.
And uh, I think that was. Sixty to a hundred feet.
Yep.
Well over a mile. And you know what? Over the years, the town has done nothing but plow it.
Yep.
They, you know, and I see, so you know, so my daughter was up doing this, when are you gonna fix this? I says, thirty years later, I says, geez, the same thing, if you add up the taxes paid at Wong Center.
Yeah, huge.
When the school bus stops, there's about three kids.
Yep.
I mean, that's a moneymaker for the town.
Correct.
You know, so um, I mean, I, you know, I've been approached to build another road, that up is a market for, but. You know, I, I see these things going on, okay, and off the record, but we're probably on the record. I lost a great project, there's a pharmaceutical company that's coming, it was referred to me from a. An engineering company east of here, very good engineering company. And they said, what do you, what do you have, you know, besides oxygen, disturbance, what do you have? So I said, I get a great place in Chalton. You know, for a. You know, a pharmaceutical building that, it could be the next Moderna, right? And it's going to Northbridge, and a friend of mine spilled me a friend, but. You know, you know what they said to me? We're not going to Chalton because we take exception where there are peer reviewed people that treat us like we don't know any of her. You know, I, I think at the end of the day, if you don't have peer reviewed, there should be three companies, and someone should decide who they are gonna pay.
Okay?
Yeah. So I'm listening to this thing here, and I see, I, I've heard this story so many times before. You know, it's like, yeah, you know, I mean, the bill gets run up, and I, I've heard engineers say to me. The peer reviewed people are doing ten percent of the work, just sending letters, and they're challenging our clients seventy five percent of what we do to do the whole job. So I'd take exception, I mean. We said, I don't have a dog in the fight, but I mean, if she's been maintaining, if he's been doing this, and it's like, okay, give us a list, we'll fix it. It shouldn't be perpetual care.
So the list is given to fix it, and it takes a year to get to that list and resubmit it, and by that time, something else is, is, is a problem, so that's been the, the problem right.
I know, but if they fixed it a year ago, it was done, the problems, the maintenance problems would have been your problems now.
Exactly, yes, exactly, no, if it had been fixed a year ago, or three years ago, when they.
Much money are they holding back on?
It's fifty five thousand.
Okay. I mean, what if, what if? And I, I don't want to speak your business, Tim, but hey, what if he got, he still owns, what if he got a third party to go in there and say, okay, we'll do it for this, we'll guarantee a date, and then you're both out of it, and.
I hate the same.
Do that.
We've already been there, we're setting a date.
Yeah.
With them to get stuff done. We've been, we've been a run around. That's why it's.
Several dates have been set, and every one of them.
I'll tell you what, I, I haven't built a house in forty years.
Yes, but.
But the maintenance issues. Excuse me. When I talk to guys in the trades, right? This guy's the most respected builder that I hear about.
Thank you. Yeah. So. I've been in his houses, he does a very good job. Very good job. And it's just. The board has set a date for stuff, and it hasn't been met. And there's a twenty four houses built already there, soup to nuts done, been done for almost three years. It hasn't met the dates as far as the deadlines that the board has set. For the last year and a half. And it's just. Time, the time's come. I hate to say it.
Over three little items.
We haven't seen these, we, we haven't gotten a report from Graves with these three little items. Have we?
No.
No, so.
That's what I'm saying, because I asked Mike Andre if he had a bond update, and he said, you would have to request it, why wouldn't it be requested, when you requested a review of the place?
Because we want to be sure that there's enough left, not like we have a panic in hell. Where there's not enough left, and there's nothing we can do about it. And the person that even owns it now doesn't even know, he has to. Put the money up to complete the road to continue to complete the loop. So it's protecting the town, make sure they're not being.
We've done that before, but there's. A bond and twenty percent added to protect the town. We've had this discussion before, when you didn't want to reach it the last time.
Yeah, well. You'll get what's, what's left after work gets completed.
But okay, but here's, here's what I see happening, okay? When I say I don't have a dog in my place, except for. It palls me. To see, you know, with the new energy codes and everything.
Yep.
Um. People aren't going to be able to afford house, you know, the, the roads are too expensive, the, the energy code is just gonna add twenty five percent or more to build the house, okay? So um. So I, you know, I, I look at all those and said, okay. If you're gonna decide, we're gonna take it over, we're gonna get prevailing wage, we're gonna have engineers and all this stuff, and uh. I don't know. If I was sitting in your position, which I'm not, I'd say, okay. I'd give, give this guy forty five days to do it, because you know what, it's gonna take you three months or four months to put the big document together, and they all think, and you're gonna be further down the line.
Know what we should have done, what we're doing now, two years ago.
We, we've done the forty five days several times now, and every time that forty five days was missed and, and ignored, so that's kind of where we're at now, so we've done that, we tried that, that was, this isn't our first try. This isn't the first time we've, we've threatened taking the bond away.
I said, hey, you're here now, and like you said, okay, you've got three trees, you've got. Uh, you got a road that was disrupted by Charter or Horizon or whoever. And is that, that's what happened to me at Wong Center, after the road was built, Abel came to town.
Uh huh.
And they ripped that up, and you know what we did? No one's gonna do anything about it, it was one of those, actually, we, we were supposed to put streetlights, then the town told us they didn't want streetlights, because they didn't want to pay the electricity. So I told everybody, well, they bought a lot from me, I said, if you want lights, put one down the end of your driveway. But I mean, you know, that, that was then, but I mean, at the end of the day, um. You know, he's, he's, he's now gonna fix the charter mess. But I'm just thinking, hey, you know.
If he had completed what was asked to do in a timely fashion, that wouldn't have happened. He would have not owned it, it would have become a town road, that's all we're asking him to do is get it completed, so the road can be accepted. For years. And we set deadlines, okay, this has to be done by then. Deadlines come and go, and nothing gets done, I personally walked you down to get the paperwork, to have the road accepted. Nothing ever happened, because things weren't done. I'm totally frustrated.
Um. Um. I can't hand in the paperwork until Mike Andre says everything is complete and done.
Right.
And the only people that can request that is you. He will not listen to me, I hate to say that, and I'm sorry, a tree fell over the winter. Yeah, I still own it, it would be taken care of, they dug up my road over the winter, so it wouldn't have been an accepted road with all these things happening, so this is still a.
If you wrote that accepted last fall meeting.
Andres, that's something the African has to do on their own, Mike Andries doesn't submit for the road acceptance, he doesn't sign off for, the African has to submit to the town for the road acceptance.
But all the paperwork that I have to submit to the town has to be approved by Mike Andre first. Correct?
I know, with that's the case, he has to approve the ASB plan, but he doesn't get involved in road acceptance, that's gonna be the town.
Yes, the ASB plan, and that's the stuff in the six page report he gave me, that he's pointing out, we're missing a point here, a point there.
Okay, so it wasn't complete on your end.
Um. The engineer submitted everything to him, and when you requested a review, that's what he gave, went back to the engineers and said, no, we're missing this, 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 and this.
Yeah, so your engineer was missing stuff on the print.
Yes.
Okay.
Which happened, it's in construction.
No, absolutely it was, yeah. Things get wrong. So, so. All right, because we voted at, at uh, May meeting, the, revoked the bond, right?
Yep.
So. That's what we stand.
Well done.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. No problem. Yeah, I'm scared to go up close again.
Thanks, Dan, have a good night. All right.
Just have a good.
Yeah.
Just one more thing to sign.
Yep.
Everybody sign the essentials for signing in our plans for the next year.
And it being regular terms, does that have to be in the uh? Does that have to be in the shopping?
No.
Oh, did we do a formal last time? From May? Yes, at the May meeting, we did it formally.
Did we vote?
Yeah, you did it formally at the May meeting, they took a vote.
Well, we'd already made the decision.
Formal vote. And I actually, literally, this afternoon, got a email from the attorney, Dan, send me. The paperwork along with the original security from the bank.
Yeah.
And then I will tell you the procedure to go.
Forward.
For the, because the whole thing was the under or over on the hundred grand, and since it's fifty five, we don't have to go to town meeting, there's a hundred grand or more. It has to be voted on at town meeting, but because it's fifty five. It can be done, we, we hear at the board level, so.
Does that have to be done in choppy, or can be in any color?
No.
Is that what we want?
I think it's twin.
And I mean, this is after we did reduce his bond. By eighty five.
What was tied in? I mean, it's not like, and the point is, it's not about him, it's about the people. Living in that, in that subdivision. Not about.
That's my math, I instantly put.
And actually, maybe. So you're like, you know, we're voting same area, we're in the same standard.
Yeah, correct.
Right in, that's what this board is doing.
Yeah. So, just so that, I know that. Bill and John, you guys showed up late, we've set the summer schedule for June twenty eighth, July twelfth, and August ninth.
Then instead of June twenty.
That worked out for you guys.
Be the twenty eighth.
That's no. Thank you. Sorry, it's gonna be in.
Right.
So, and actually, at our June twenty eighth meeting. As a board where I'm not saying anymore than, but we're, we're going to be rehearing the podcast application, Dave McKay will also be in attendance, at least be a Zoom. To guide the board, because it's been remanded back to the board.
Yeah.
June twenty eighth meeting.
Yeah, and uh. Well, Dave McKay will also be in attendance to help guide the board with that application.
Okay. All right, any, any other word back from council on the other two issues? Uh. Well, the lot. The usage for Larry's way.
Yes.
And.
He's bringing that together now, he's actually having a.
Uh, paralegal or something?
No, he's, he's talking to um, the African's attorney, that I believe is tomorrow. Um, to. Go over them. They're all right.
Six AM, waiting for the bus.
He'll have something for the board, um. Once the two attorneys discuss it, and then.
That's a Larry's way or, or concrete?
Concrete, concrete, and what was the other one that?
Larry's way for the.
Larry's way, the um, he's submitted his opinion, he gave me. Permission to submit it, they now have him propose three separate lots, each lot with a battery.
In compliance.
So in the, they submitted a. Um, the sketch plan to Kurt, which Kurt and I looked at today, it can be done, you know, three separate lot, and still, well, Mr. McKissick has, Larry has. You know, a processing operation, he didn't want to impact it, but there's still enough room over there, so they get their batteries, and Larry can do what he wants, so.
Is it drawn up, or just a sketch?
It was written out as sketch.
Okay.
So, or the whole idea is, you want us to look at before they come in with a formal plan, to make sure that, you know, we're gonna be on board with it. Staff level, you know, that'll comply with zoning, so.
And can you double check the bylaws, I couldn't find anything in here, just because it's, it was from, was two thousand nineteen, I think, when we did our solo bylaws, just to make sure. That um, that the setback isn't. Required for a standalone. I know that we have the setbacks, I thought we discussed setback for battery two, to make their way out. Whoever got into the provider.
Okay.
But um, you know, otherwise they would need some sort of CBA waiver or something, I'm not sure that's even possible, is it? Got that.
Oh, they, they have, you know, full plate variance, you know, you know.